Now call the Court Commission's second work session, budget work session to your order. Um, if you'd come up with a few interesting questions about bailiffs and, um, work with Malaysia, there's funds there to increase their salaries and their, um, daily pay without having to reduce budgets, uh, and then stick to Judge Simpson because the budget lines that fall under him. And so it is the grand jury that asked to determine what the bailiffs make. And there was a grand jury present yesterday and presented them and I believe, I'm not officially documented, but they've come back with a hundred dollars a day. And that does fit the budget without any, any changes. So that was your question, I got answered.
Right, thank you.
And then for Malaysia, because there were lots of other questions that she has, um, researched or reached, uh, bigger than all.
Yeah, I mean, uh, what I did have to package in each of your questions that, uh, just tried to address the questions that we've had in the last time. The top page is, uh, a summary of the budget appropriations, uh, a summary of, we just got some line of revenue and a summary by, kind of by line, I mean, which, which pages from that, uh, that Commissioner Noonan had asked for. So I, I, I thought it was I, I just put that in a summary form, I didn't know all this information to everyone, uh, of, of recent, so there were, I don't remember exactly how many days, but, um, so I just thought all of this information, hopefully address all the questions that we've had, um, the last session. And then, uh, if we have any questions, I would want to tie that, uh, the set of those or if we have questions about the, the pressure that we need to address, and if we get through. I'm not going to go through the summary line by line, but it's, it's just that summary. So, uh, the, I think the, as, as we went through the budget, I'm trying to go through the order that we went through the budget, so I think the first question was about the, uh, soft software for IT and cybersecurity. So I asked Jacob, um, to give us some information on that, and he's actually provided warranty protection, uh, that so far, so far as our current provider, and so this would be an additional service that they would offer. And, uh, it's a, uh, anti-violent ransomware software, uh, that keeps threats mitigated and controls different infiltrations in our system. And, uh, it would have, um, a team of personnel watching over these things that were detected by the software. Uh, it would have a team available 24/7 to investigate these threats and to address them immediately, which is virtually impossible for a small IT, uh, group like we have. You would need a, a, a very large group to be able to get that kind of coverage, uh, just out of your IT department. So, uh, and he's, he's gone into a fair amount of detail. Uh, I think there was a question about getting a second opinion as to whether we need this. Uh, this was immediately addressed in the NTSU assessment, uh, that they did at, uh, at the courthouse, and they recommended that we have something comparable to this in place, uh, if we had some exposure by not having this. Uh, and Jacob felt like if, if we didn't have this, that we would need to hire two additional, uh, people just for security. So that's why he feels like going with this package is a better deal because, uh, the cost of it is less than the cost of one employee with benefits.
Call out the, um, the warranty information, I'd ask about that.
Correct.
You know, the consumer side, like a life lock, they'll guarantee the other's own pension money, so I'd say that maybe a dollar doesn't double the cost, it's a hundred thousand, hundreds of, um, ransom things, things like that. Just to me, that's where a lot of your value comes in, that they're backing up what they're selling, what they're supposed to be watching for.
And I did have a discussion, uh, with Mr. Noonan, with an insurance company, oh, the insurance agency, and, uh, he felt like this would be really good selling for some cyber, uh, future too, uh, not to keep us from, it may not prevent us from down, but hopefully keep them from being present. I think the next question is on the GFL contract, uh, and so we've got a summary, uh, of the contract and the terms, uh, of the contracts. I think the contract terms was, we had a question about, uh, the last contract is signed on seven one, or maybe not signed on seven, but it was effective seven one, twenty twenty two. Uh, it, and it has, uh, one year, uh, with up to two, with two one-year additional mules. Uh, and then after that, we can go with the three more additional one-year, uh, listen, if though actually it's taken by county, it will automatically be reduced to two years. And then, uh, it can be, it, it could be terminated by county or the FFL after the, the third year with fifty five minutes. And the expiration of the contract is due third of, of twenty twenty eight, or those mules. Uh, it adds on both of the contracts, the one contract that transports already is from the transfer station to the landfill, and the other contract that transports from the convenience center to the transfer station.
Uh, at least a couple of questions if I can, if I can figure my notes. Uh, the tipping, dumping fees? Uh, I just heard that parts were quite more than heritage accounting, uh, and, you know, what person would contribute when they said security, if you'd like to take this sort of, uh, heritage accounting. So I just didn't know what is our, how are tipping fees set and, and what do they tell them?
The tipping fees are set by the, a, a combination of a couple of different things. One, we pay the total cost to operate the transfer station, and then we take the terms that's estimated committed to the transfer station, and that estimate is based on what we've done over the prior year, and it's been called, and we look back a couple of years just to see where we're treating as far as the terms is concerned. So we take that cost and, and divide it by, uh, the number of crews. Now, I'm not familiar with the council committee, I don't know if they have their own landfills, but we're having to pay the transport, I also have the Pope Towne landfill, which is the least expensive place that we can call to. Uh, and they have gone up on their tipping fee. So not only, not only we have to pay for the transportation, get the trash from the transfer station to Pope Towne, but we, we have to pay another tipping fee for me to accept our time again to their landfill. So we take all of the costs associated with transportation, and that's the majority of the costs of the transportation, the tipping fees that are paid to Pope Towne. And then, we do have a little bit of cost in running the transfer station, but not a whole lot, and we got, I think, five hundred, twelve hundred here, so there's not a, a whole lot of cost. Uh, you know, the college, the big loans, and the cost of the parent land upon the loan, which is fairly expensive, he put that in a deal with moving trash. Uh, but we take that, and I, I estimate a number of terms, and that's how we come up with that, that tipping fee. I mean, we're just trying to break it.
Yeah, uh, that, that's what I wondered, and I wondered if there was anything, because we take around ideas, uh, while we're wanting to be interested in, uh, I didn't know, I guess there, is that tipping fee stratified or, uh, do we have tier fees if you bring a lot of trucks there or is this like that?
The, the only difference is the, the retail customers, which would include the city of Carroll, pay one tipping fee, and then Carroll County gets a little bit of discount on the thing that we pay to bring the trash and convenience center into the transfer station.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But no, it doesn't, I mean, the city of Carroll pays the same amount that I would pay coming in and took. With all these things, you take, there is a minimum charge. So if I took five hundred pounds, then I might have, I might, I might not show any direct charge, uh, I might pay a minimum charge, which would be a higher price for a ton, but once you get above that minimum charge, then, then it's the same.
But where we're getting at, with on the expense side, uh, it's not necessarily whether we, yes, we need to stay on top of just what our commercial customers are working every day, first of all, and, and the actual transfer station or old landfill. But where we're getting at, as long as they fit in the category of regular cars or clients or whatever, it's unlimited if it's a convenience center, and that's where the cost, I mean, we're talking about two separate deals here going to the same place, but that is where, in my mind, the cost is, is not controlled, because we're providing a free service there. And if you've got a, a little tiny long trek, and you want to come to the convenience center seven hundred times in one day, as long as it fits in this category, you're not going across the scale and paying at the transfer station, you're giving the free fee at the convenience center. And I'm not saying right along with the difference, I'm just saying that's where the cost continues, in my opinion, to kind of rail out, or we're not able to really.
What I hear is if we set this GFL contract, uh, it can go through twenty twenty eight?
That's right.
For this same forty-six dollars a ton?
No, there's a, there's a, there's a Philippine CPI tax increase each year.
Yeah, that's only my question, is it free even forty-six dollars a ton?
Yeah, it, it goes up, uh, and that, and that increase this year is over eight percent, between eight and nine percent, I don't know what to guess, and it's, uh...
Per year, or per, per time?
Per, per this one year. Now, next year, it's CPI high, you know, this year, if you, the reports are somewhere between eight and ten percent inflation for twenty twenty-two, and that's what it's based on, is what the, what the increase was for twenty twenty-two. So, yeah, next year, inflation is at one percent, and maybe we should see a one percent increase in, in the contract rate.
So according to what's in place, the, the, this graph, is...
That's right, what you're suggesting.
Not the same.
That's right.
Would you agree, and I'm not trying to drag you into right along with you being the referee, but, yes, the contract's important, when the contract says it's extremely important, but where the gap is, is the uncontrolled tether of amounts that are coming into the convenience center. Would you not agree that's the part that we don't have our hands on, like, if we want the cost to continue to rise at such an inflated rate?
I mean, there's always, and if we can't control, well, if, if we, if we don't have some kind of structure, we can't control how much comes in. And really, you won't it come in, because you don't want it on the side of the roads, uh, or in back lights, or wherever people will put trash, they didn't carry it to the convenience center. Uh, but I, I also think that having a GFL as your one source provider, nobody, nobody else has the service in this area hampered just to the real city, but you're looking at city center, I mean, they're doing transportation, transportation costs are pretty good, uh, we, all of the, we, so, we, you know, transportation costs are rather difficult, uh, which may seem to be a lot of, um, at this point, we're coming through, uh, but I, I guess, um...
The, the elephant in the room is not we're paying a dollar for twenty-five mile, a dollar forty mile, it's, if they've got to make ten loads instead of three loads, that's where the, that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, more times. Because I had people tell me from Huron County that they're bringing trash out of Carroll County, also from Holly County, they're bringing trash out of Eastside, so, uh, we're paying them, they're not paying any taxes or anything. I think that's what Clint's, Clint's talking about, and we're getting a lot of hits there Sunday, which drives our cost.
It, it, that's, there's some way we can figure out how to control them.
Wow, so, so basically, as far as looking for another contract, or GFL is operating through, so sort of provider, I think they have a competition. Then on this point, uh, it sounds very valid, and I know from experience, uh, there, the local convenience center, which, which come out from outside, the federal office, and where contractors are, so, motion for a counter, and so on, and I would get complaints from the person that was there trying to manage, and he and she, he said, you know, like, they live in control, like, people would, would get upset with them, and try to run over them, like, have them hang on, and hurt the young man, it, it was a bad situation, no, there's no, there, I wouldn't, necessarily, places, they have no enforcement ability, and, and Sheriff's Office, I mean, they're doing all the team, because we don't have a terribly large budget for them either, then it's not like, they're just lying away, they may have gone eighteen miles before they get there, well, incident's over. So we don't have any control over this access from our account, or from people, it shouldn't be done anyway. I looked into, uh, and I thought that I should say this on D O W, but I, I gotta be a good old, really, again, department head here, talking, how, um, what's happened to the budget process this time, that is happening, it seems to me like a demonic part of trying to operate in, in a vacuum. Uh, I did try to make it around to other agencies, it seems like rather inefficient way to handle budget costs, because each agency then has to talk to certain seven people, they have the same question, and certain seven nine, I don't know if they were here. Uh, I mean, I remember the days when we'd come, we'd matter on the table with the agency, and, uh, at their interviews, and then even now, we had the opportunity to play with Peter, but, so, apologize, I, I, I made it to everybody I had questions about, but, back to the control of the convenience centers. Uh, eventually, then the Sheriff's Office worked with them and, and said, here's a camera, if you can order a dent by the sheriff, and when incidents like that occur, turn the camera on, and go report it, then we can do something about, uh, can we control things that way? And how, how can those little more control at the convenience center, so that when you have the door open on track, or how county, so, that, that those folks there, they at least have some recording ability, or, or something, that, that we can do something about, so, get access to it in the problem.
I think it's gonna come down in line with parks, it's gonna end up getting itself bad to be able to get into the things. That's, that's the only way, if you don't have the, the personality or policy, you can't go.
We missed, I think, we missed, I think, three numbers now in the past couple months, and we've been gathering a lot of different information, because a lot of things to consider if we're moving with that, I'm not the one who said that, and we're gonna have to do that, but taking into account municipality, and then municipality, of course, to, like when the city bill regularly reports that trash service, whether you want it or not, you're charged that on your bill, so when we look at duplicate services, that we can't duplicate that, we're trying to figure out how do we mitigate that, maybe, so the city bill doesn't offer a sky count, for example, but we did, so there may be a cost component we could charge for, uh, city residents, it might be different for a component you charge to an incorporated resident, so there's a lot, I guess, of research and information that's going on, and that's not answer the safety concerns, I know Sheena and I have spoken about that, but just, the gist of dealing with all that tonnage, and how do we look at that, that's something that Sheena and I have been working on, hopefully that we can bring to the board in the next couple of months. But it happened, T is a lot more research, and even I originally thought, what would the structure look like if we did decide to charge, because that's just one example, incorporated versus unincorporated, or someone's already been forced to have trash service.
My, my concept is, is that, that makes sense, but my concept is, with anything, uh, if you have violators that are making an arm or a massive situation for the majority, just like somebody going eight hundred dollars or whatever, you don't charge the people who, who access the road, pin the blame, and find the violator. I guess, if, if the problem is out of county violators or contractors who should sit in any of the landfill, why do I, because the taxpayer has to pay more fees now on the taxes, or when you get, get the violator and find them? But that's my, my...
Well, I, I haven't done research, but, but the cost of monitoring the system like that, maybe, the, I mean, the recommendation that Commissioner Tenet is talking about, maybe a lot more efficient and effective as far as cost is concerned, than putting in some type of monitoring system to try to keep, uh...
Well, my, my problem with this system, I was talking about the people at the convenience center worrying mechanically what that does, and if there are problems or incidents of some faulty kind of perpetuation there, or trailers, destruction and stuff, that, that turn the camera on, get the information, send it to Sheriff's Office, that violator is handled, and eventually, I think, rather quickly, we'll get around and we'll handle this access to the track. I mean, I'm for not harming Carroll County's citizens, because somebody else is doing something wrong, that's all I'm saying.
Well, this is the, this is the third layer cycle that I remember, where we talked about some sort of system, or some, some kind of system in the camp for the, for the tracks, and, or some identification that you are a Cal County resident when you're going into these, uh, convenience centers. I mean, it may be a sticker, it may be a tag, it might be something, but I, I think it's kind of a resident, I mean, I appreciate you talking about, we, we, turning that off to George Pope's back, I mean, George Trump Pope's back, when, when he had, he was on the, but, could you give us an answer on the camera system? Where would we go with that?
I have no idea.
Well, we got the folks in the county that, who, who, who does...
Does the whole, you know, the...
Something like you talking about, talking to Derek Park?
Well, totally, unfortunately, because they don't have bike cameras.
Why don't we do, why don't we, let's, let's start talking, let's try to figure out something. I mean, we got a budget product right now, we don't have anything about it right now, because we're, we're right here, very educated, but here this next year, we didn't have or have some kind of system about what we're going to do to the convenience centers, but I think there may be enough room and place, if we can find out about these bike cameras for the folks working at the, uh, convenience center. But I want to say something, I used to go down White Earth, and you talk about it, it's going nowhere, and there's one, one person down there, he's out there by himself, so he probably needs a little security, a lady there, to clean up or, or shut the, turn on something, and take him.
Yes, no, I, I, I guess we probably need to talk to S and L, since those people are there, the only means to, to get some of the volume from them, uh, about where they're, they're handling.
The other side of that, that logo, this F Y I, was the, the person that was complaining about the system, and I thought he would be singled out, and I came up and he thought that was unfair, you know, trying to get a violator, so, but maybe, maybe where, um, it seems like that could be a tool, you know? Can I go back to that, I'm a little injured, uh, I also talked with, uh, one thing, you can, and, or are we, or else, uh, de-dug them all out, and I, I know we're, we're in a situation now where, for short term, our way to kind of jack out because of some unfortunate events, and can we raise our de-dugables? And he said, we were looking at it, but, uh, I mean, raise our de-dugables is on the point, although that may be twenty-five thousand, or a hundred thousand, or whatever, uh, with a camera on our business, uh, but we can adjust our premium a little downward by increasing our de-dugables.
Um, well, at, at this point, we're looking at every option.
Yeah.
We're, you know, we're, we're trying to find somebody that could find our business acceptable, so, um, we're looking at every option that's available, um, to try to make sure that we have coverage and, and make sure that it's, it's cost effective, it's needed, uh, so, it's, it's really one of the parts, and pursuing every avenue that's not there, whether, uh, if you see that, we're talking about a single de-duck or a single situation, or an avenue that could, uh, de-duck us in adjusting some costs there, or, or some numbers there to, to help with the costs, uh, but, but at this point, we're just trying to secure coverage. Uh, I mean, we don't, I don't know what that's going to look like, this, uh, we don't have any commitment to any company, so we're, uh, we're pursuing every available option out there, and, uh, yes, hopefully that's going to, uh, reflect in, in, being able to keep the premiums within where is the budget that it is going.
Okay, I was gonna ask, so what will the, the budget reflect? Is it like the higher premiums?
Uh, yes, it does, like, uh, high forty percent, uh, but, um, you know, if you're not looking at any options, you, uh, I mean, I, I think R A A degrees last week that, uh, are going to push power lines into Georgia, because of how these are staged more, I think they put some limits on, uh, with, with, I'm not sure about the particulars, but they put limitations on falts in the state park, and, uh, hopefully do the part, too, I think.
I was talking to some partner from state, who, who represented, and, uh, Jacob was one, uh, and he said that Tyler could also spend a beating part of the city area, uh, and it would be a good, I gotta call him again, two different times, and, uh, but, but like we were discussing before, like, maybe that's your own, I mean, we're not number one in the nation, and I'm not voting, and yes, I know we have a camera, but it's a sort of a county that, uh, it affects everybody, but when you have the trial orders, you have trial orders, and then the legislative seats, so it's a problem to, to get that cap down, and, and, uh, that's, I mean, that's just the, uh, it's a terrible situation, I'm a Georgia number one, lifts up a number three, I'm actually, like, going out, so... a choice number one, moved up to number three in the industry, and I can go without it.
It's a difficult problem.
I think one of the challenges is, and, yes, as you say, we're trying to look at every option. We're also looking at, as Commissioner Remus says, and we, uh, you know, what that government looks like. I think one of the difficulties we have, we were a private sector business, that it rose out of service, and we all had, had two fifty's away, all had twenty-five hundred shillings pickups. We know, yeah, you're getting each year, how many are going to get wrecked. But you know those vehicles have a fifty thousand dollar annual piece of what they're worth. With us, we're a thirty-nine thousand dollar chair, it's car, we're a fifty dollar fire truck. So we sit here trying to play, what do we think that looks like? And all of a sudden, you know, we adjusted something, we hit it with a million dollar fire truck, it totally lost. Then all of a sudden, you lost everything that you tried to adjust in that, um, you know, deductible amount. So it's a very hard balance to try to play, because we have, uh, the fluctuation outside of just the individualized, the fact that it's on the, the automobile side. Uh, it's, it's such a gamble. It's hard to figure out.
You see, they're operating under a most difficult situation, especially if you're in town, or, uh, yeah, it's difficult. Okay, so, uh, the, the next thing we're saying has, has certainly, uh, personnel costs, uh, I couldn't begin with, uh, a voice of some of the, uh, court personnel, uh, board workers, acting, tax freezer, animal shelter, nine one one, uh, public works, transportation parks, and things about that. And then the warden submitted some information, our department submitted some information, sheriff submitted some information on comparisons, uh, county to county comparisons, and, uh, even with some information there from the city itself. And, and I think in most categories, you'll see that we're behind her, uh, on our pay scale compared to, uh, the other entities. Uh, the warden took a look at what the state was paying, uh, and they're, uh, we're behind, you know, where the state's paying, and the state's having a, uh, serious problem trying to find correctional officers. So, uh, I don't know that anybody knows a solution to the correction officer situation. Uh, not many people want to do it in, in the paint, not nobody either. Uh, and I think there was a specific question about the tax session office and, and whether, uh, the reasons that we're anticipating would resolve their problem. And I had a, a specific conversation with the chief of craters. And he said, in the state of Georgia, there's about six thousand craters lived in the profession a year. Uh, so if the demand or the number of craters stays the same, the people want to do the job difference in year over year. Uh, and if you're in a situation like that, uh, it puts you in a similar situation, I would think, I guess. People are just not loving their careers. That's not a major concern, they don't want to go and do it. Uh, and part of that has to do with going out in the field, going to people's houses, and, uh, you know, with the craters, they're giving a hard time, they're coming on the people's property, they're giving you the job. Uh, so, uh, I think at the end of the day, the answer is no, we don't anticipate the ratings and charge the property in the tax, that's all.
Wait, is, is he indicating six thousand a year waiting for public service, tax, tax assessment, or is that the entire answer?
He, he, it's, I think it's the entire answer. I don't think it's specifically the ones that go out, that are in the field. I think that sums it all. But he, he hadn't had too much of a problem filling the office positions, uh, the ones that are staying in the office and doing the, the, uh, the work that's there. It's the field craters that he's having a hard time filling those jobs.
And are we already, we're contracting now, Scott, some of those things now?
We, we are.
So you're telling me that we're going, we may run into a shortage of private insurance?
Possibly. I think they're paying, uh, a little better than we are, even though their benefits aren't quite as good as ours are. Uh, and, you know, they're, uh, I'm sure it works on numbers, you know. I, I, I guess they're paying about, the number that they do, it goes to about an hour, I can tell you. So for our companies, uh, but, yeah, I miss the, first, first of all, in general, is the challenge right now for, for pretty much every industry across the board, is when you get into some of these specialized industries, you get more challenging.
I suppose you were saying, I think one of the things that he has to cover is because he actually twenty-one. And also, he is a thirty-four year old that says, well, yeah, I'll try this, it's something I want to do. He can't bring them in if they don't have the certification and any less of an injury level position. So he's pretty much stuck with hiring twenty-one, twenty-two year olds. Nothing wrong with that. But if he finds a good working person that's ten years older, with good experience and so on, unless they're certified, he can't bring them in any normal society, which hurts, uh, many of that, that difficulty that I have with him, even that's why I was there. So, yeah, maybe it is a difficult situation to do. I mean, and, and all the studies and certifications you have to go through, it's in kind of a way, uh, I'm glad they have a contract that we're behind, so that is, we all know that, you know, it's, uh, because we feel that somebody has skin in the game, care about me. But what we can do about that, I don't know what we're already doing.
Well, I think we've been, uh, good, really been in the right direction this year. Hopefully we'll, we'll see things improve going forward. Uh, the, the next area that I wanted to address is Commissioner Chance asked about us possibly paying off of our, our debt. And the, the only debt we have on our budget is for the lease purchase on Jeep House there. And there are some restrictions on how we can pay that down. Uh, so on a, uh, on a scale of payment days, we can make a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars pay down, up to a maximum of a one million dollar payment. And, uh, so we could potentially on all of the first pay a million dollars, on the second one, the first pay a million dollars, and then on the following all of that pay a million dollars. Uh, then, uh, the, the thing is, we're hopefully, we borrow that money at first to make one percent. And right now, uh, return is, uh, anywhere from four to five percent, uh, depending on where I invested it. So we're making a little bit more than this cost as well. Uh, but that's something that needs to be, I would, I would.
And I think we've made that, and I appreciate you saying that. I think we definitely made sound like we're decisioning where we're best, you know, borrowing money a little rate. I think the point I was making, and I've heard that from officials looking at states at different levels, is most government entities that have been conservative, but I think they've done well in their reserves. And so, in my eyes, instead of keep pushing the bar on the reserve supply, no one's ever really free to be dead for it. And so that's kind of my theory, if we can maybe rethink how we're, you know, handling some of the reserves. I think we're going to get into some tight times, and we may not see it as happen so easy as we've had in the past. I bet we had it easy, but we've had easier decisions than in some previous boards that had to deal with it every single time. But I just think looking, instead of what we have been doing, we've been trying to take terror employees, we've been trying to take care of capital projects or different things that we need to try to buy into the year, and we're trying to work on our reserves. So I would just tend to make that point, instead of working on the reserves, if they are at their healthy position, we might consider paying down our debt, which is where we all are ultimately free when we're dead free. So you make a valid point about the percentage rate of what we're earning versus what we're paying. Uh, but I just hope that's something we'll keep in consideration, you know, paying down our debt if we can.
And, and I'm not opposed to doing it. Um, just with the construction projects that, the unknowns with the construction projects that we have out there right now, I'm a little reserved about the, once those things are more, uh, complete, and we know what we're dealing with on, on those items, I'm not opposed. I mean, I don't-
That's fair enough.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of that, so, uh, I would be more willing to, to look at that. Uh, now, speaking about, uh, things that, that they're addressing, and some items that we want to look at, uh, only the work of employees and, and things that some of the departments have asked about, uh, it does look like that, and I think it's probably in the year, we will have some money, uh, our revenue's a little bit, and I think we will have some money, uh, that will go beyond our corporate budget. So it should be the next to the last page in the top of our year's purchases. Uh, and, uh, each, each department has, I think, probably submitted something, uh, well, not, not all of us have submitted something. Some of the departments we were able to take that out in pretty small questions. Uh, so we, uh, we do that. But I'll, I'll break through this real quick. And, uh, again, we can take this into consideration and look at it. And, uh, I would like to vote on this at the junior meeting, uh, if y'all are comfortable with moving forward with this. Uh, and this, this is based on my projection, where I think we'll be at the end of the year, uh-
And what's this related to?
The next to the last page.
Year end emergency?
Correct.
All right.
Correct. Uh, so, uh, just in the, in the discussion, we, we have a couple of critical orders, three winters, we have to approach those by three years. Uh, new resources that has started a copier, uh, they, they're, they're just kind of secondhand, and they run it for about five years, just secondhand. And so it's starting to get some miles on it. Uh, the, the sheriff's office would like to put a classroom in the land at the nine nine seven million road, and they need about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of equipment, or that classroom, saying, uh, they're also asking for some smart, some S R C equipment, uh, laptops for the control units, uh, which are talking to get that number, I think most of their other partners are over, over, uh, training supplies. And then the, the big ask is for a security scheme system at the jail. Uh, this would, uh, I don't particularly know that term, but I believe it would eliminate, uh, Pat Anderson and hand searches. Uh, it would be better enough to, to actually do things within the body, uh, that could potentially be called into the jail as a danger to the personnel or danger to the, you know, danger to the person that's actually been, uh, put in, uh, the, uh, CI, they're generally, they're generally spurred between five and twelve years old. And, uh, they just need to have a good solid generator, something happens that they have to keep, maybe they're running that, that CI. Uh, the fire department has a number of asks, uh, they, they, they want, uh, some repair and testing, uh, equipment, I think, for their, uh, air vents. And then, uh, they need the, they need, uh, ten cylinders for those areas, uh, mobile data terminals, and they need nine more, they need to go with the fire trucks. Uh, they need additional radio bams, the radios that we've all on the campus, one battery, and they're not licensed full ship for the fire department. So they're asking for a second set of bams, uh, to replace those with. And then, uh, vehicle eight oh two has a, a backboard that's gone out, uh, and, you know, emergency lights. And they're going to replace all that. Uh, and we're going to get a, a vehicle lift and go and put work, so they can have additional lift to work on equipment. And then, uh, uh, the pack tire, the mount total of theirs is about a hundred, uh, they need a couple air meters, a couple of combustible gas detectors, uh, in these, I, I think are what they go, what they use to go into, uh, a, a fire area to see if they've got an issue. Uh, although this is pretty technical equipment. So, uh, they need ten sets of G S A R equipment, uh, a hundred and forty sets of M L X foods, that's the fire products, uh, a hundred and forty pairs of structural fire line gloves. They need replacement rope for rope rescue use, uh, four sets of D A R equipment for replacement. They've got ten sets, and they need to replace forward. They have one unit to go out and die, um, not come on again. So it's kind of hard to figure out. Uh, ten sets, turn on your radio color light repairers, uh, two E F P A compliant criminal imaging cameras, and, uh, repairers at the Mount Mountain and San Hill Fire Station.
Who started that? That's definitely not one of the vehicles, yeah? Does that sound right to you?
I think that's how, we thought going for public works to use on their side of the shop, and that's about what I'm thinking.
Home shop, I think it would be. Oh, I want to add that could-
Yeah.
Could you think about that, was I draw it or whatever it is, to pick up some of the place there with some of them?
Well, I don't, I think it's, uh, like for the, um, pickup truck, and, uh, I don't, it's not-
Right, it would be like a fire truck, but still, even when you're talking a couple of them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, public works, uh, need the new, uh, sign-on computer, they're, they're just several years old, and some new sign-on software, they have actually gone and looked at the pickup, all the things, and, however, that's what's moving, I think. And so that's where we have the approximation of that. And then they need to do access to going in the trucks or going out in the summer to keep their, their, uh, at the rape department, this, the hundred and fifty thousand we have in there is a portion of what we need. A few years ago, they committed about five hundred thousand dollars to really get the electrical out there. And they have been working on that, humanizing, and they've done quite a bit of that work themselves. There's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that still need it, if they need to take a contract to do. And so they can take the five hundred thousand from the crime line, add this one fifty-two, they can put in all new L E lights on the whole park, and finish off that electrical work they need to do to clean it out there. So, uh, they're putting together some, I, I think they're actually putting together an order to, um, to get some, some classes- to get some, for the price on the way out, except that one condition is that they need important quarters. They also have asked for tables and changers, they're having senior citizens to be in the town hall, and they're having the department, the department to find changers and pens, and they'd like to get their own tables to keep at that department, for them to do that. And John Tanner, they're relaxing, doing, cutting off, putting some new obstacles, new cars, preparing the setups, including some shady structures.
Are you gonna be with them?
Yeah, we're not too much. We can do it, it's all, 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 all.
How much do you want to do with the obstacles?
They also could get, they could get some trash cans for new campsites, they hope to have a campsite that'll be going by the border there, so we'll start seeing some movement back on that. And then at Magna Touch, they're like, they'll be playing, they'll have a first class, then community development can ask for two trucks, one for the gray ones sector, and one for the chief maintenance sector. In the commission office, we're looking at about $25,000 for software to help with board appointments, open record requests, and keeping up with the minutes, that's a more than just a level process. General administration, 997, that's the way to protect the building, $500,000 to get that in the union. Then this management, that's $200,000 that I would like to put in the capital project sum, so if we didn't have to go to the consideration of power, the duct, but we got someone to sit and, and then we could, or if we, they think, or if we have, that's kind of a help us about that, the increase in, in the duct, that we, that we're gonna have. Chief Joe, he would have asked for $10,000. My school's a library, they've asked for $100,000 to work to do some improvements at several of their others. The H C N has asked for a new van or transportation, and then we created $200,000 for employee retention. So that's what we've considered.
The $500,000 that came out of the slots, but they haven't been built, we didn't have to come out of the, the rest part of the land to the H C N.
He could, um, I mean, this, this may all be sort of a slot, um, if we, if we...
But it's not true to that, of course, they haven't been built in the past. When you start, state and run somewhere else, and that's for, thanks for letting us, but they haven't been built. I mean, I, I'm just, the way I'm just, I mean, is that job, is that job?
Well, it would be, I mean, we, we can, someone would have taken it to take that and put that in, or would have taken that and send it home.
But the reason for him, is because he's got the location of the H C N, so the $500,000 is going to be in the process. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Where, where are you going with the, the, if we have the number two, that if in the next block, we feel we're going to ask the citizens to build Sheriff's, building the Sheriff's Office of Little Club Street, so whatever we do at 997, the old western tech building, will be something that can continue on regardless of which, so, yes, I could patch it up as part of the final call, the county admin, although also now we're getting that asset to use for something else. So I think, it's how do we reach the one specific, figure out how to get it to bottom made, but you're right, it is, it is part of, if you're right, we did not move the people out of the H C N building and chose another location, but we still would have to do something with the current facility of Rachel Tech, we have to spend something on it, or we say we can't, or there'd be something against with it.
True, but we can, it would be, I would, it would be... So all these year-end purchases are addition to the budget that we have now?
The 2024 budget, the current budget.
So all this money that we got here, is left over for, for the previous budget? It's projected in the current year, that we'll be in June thirtieth, that we're gonna be over approximately this amount projected, revenue against expense, so if, if the income coming in, it will be in June thirtieth, so if we save that amount, I believe we'll fund these letters.
We, the savings are coming in on the budget, revenues are coming in the excess budget, so we, we can make a maximum revenue in this budget, but this is a proposal, so I think...
Something, I guess what you're saying, this is what they're contributing, asking for at the end of the, with the surplus, right?
Well, some of this is asking the actual operating budget, but since we have, it's in, in the, all of this is more kind of, kind of high purchases, so, not a funded, not an annual budget, and they can be muted to that on any other, with the buyer's stuff at the end of the year, and do the thing for, and move on.
But to the commissioner, by this point, I'm not trying to answer, but after you detail, it's really about, you've got departments that may have four banks in it, and the money's sitting there, doesn't necessarily mean you go fund it, but if they have higher value for that money, it's sitting there, which really, that's over if you will, versus there could be another conversation, that one department has more money, that it's a need to make it funded, and then the third thing is that revenue where they are coming in, over projections, so if you've got three that is probably the one and only one to reach that number.
Well, the 997 Main Road, all that's needed, you know, that's getting rid, that's not the move.
Yeah, I was trying, okay. I guess I'm, I don't know, like, the cost to repair that is still leaving, oh, now I see, you're talking about, the timetable for that, for that, that U S D A, or she has all the, like, should we propose, like, be a part of, plan and prepare them, or move out there, and then, of course, that cost, and like, it's, it's over a while, that we...
It, it just, we don't have one, I mean, that $500,000 is just evidence, that I thought was out of the air, that something aside, that we would have some money to do with that, and there's not a telling of, and five, I mean, we're still in the process at this point, and I, I don't have any kind of evidence, for what it's going to take, because I don't understand if you can identify where the, the parts are going, so, that comes to be with, uh, a plan, or, I think, two months will be that, I think, I don't know, I, I'm not having a lot of, um, in that, I, I don't think that we have any time, the contract.
I have a contract, I have a, um, Josh, who met through the process, who walked in the property on the month, and talking with the department, that they're moving out there, so I don't have a plan yet, and still working on it, so they're, they understand the time constraints, we also have to work with the department on when they can and can't move, because they have to advertise for the property tax, they go out, have to address the reception business in the middle, everything about the municipal elections, or the county in the fall, so, a lot of work is being done, and we still have to answer to the right of the tech.
Do you, do you have a contract yet?
Definitely.
Okay. How are we, do you have that for that?
Yes, yes.
Or, or...
No, no, they're, they're doing the, the design of western tech today, that's what , that everybody, not necessarily the construction work, they're doing the, the design, because they're having a front where people can, with the movement, which were 997 and Road, they have to be back, so Val Corbati is working to do that whole process.
So, for some reason, I, I just, I may not be more of your, I just feel somewhat lost, I, I try to really handle that. But it seems, like, so overall, what we're giving, we're giving a lot of, was, there's six point two million injuries, to that nine point two percent.
Personal health, I mean, probably things, something...
Totally, that's different, compared to the next year.
That's quite a lot.
Yeah, so six million, nine percent, and of that, the bulk of it, sixty-seven percent was about 4.175 million for the two hour hour satellite increases, which, you may try, so it's worth that, bringing that up for discourse, but, now, we've got something to count, hanging loose, I guess, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with, so, let me ask, so one field position, and that kind of thing, are, are laid, because I know we have a long field position, sending a higher people, that, uh, if we were to fully set those, is the money in the proposed budget, or is it, okay, okay?
Yes, the only positions that are, in the, in the, 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 positions that we have contacted out, and there is, five positions that 991, that are unfunded, because there are one, there's not a doubt there, the funding positions, that they feel like that, they don't, they don't have them, they don't, they have exits now, they got orders now, so she feels like that she can fill up the current, that she can, plenty of time that she's got, or, uh, next, you know, next year, and maybe looking at, having such a time, when most of the counties do, and if you remember, fully funded positions, that we'll probably have to do, and person to change in the 991, that, that I might have all of the positions that we have, you know, for, or funded in the budget.
Okay, all of the, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, so, okay, okay.
Well, Dr. Yen, I mean, that's, that's fully taken, not, not fully taken, but, that's fully taken, yeah, funded, so we, the vacancies are clearly, yes, we have them funded, and that...
Okay. Yeah, well, I guess this, this whole, this is a little puzzling to me, just, it, it, it might end up being two and a half, maybe around that, I mean, and then we've got the, maybe I'm on a firm here, facing, if you don't, because I'm, but, talking about the, anything about the U S D A houses, I mean, we've got, like, June seven deadline to decide, but it's part of the budget decision, because if it's gonna cost us four million to accommodate that, then, I mean, I don't do it, I mean, I don't know what quarter or half, so we've got a very fast deadline, but, but I don't have a cost associated with that, so, by June seven, we have to, that, while we're doing it with them, I guess, for what I read, but I have no idea about cost, temporary location costs, or long-term cost. Regardless of that, I've got a handful of million dollars that was pulled out of the air, just for moving, current operating, and that might cost even a million or more, I think, we're really on the edge.
Well, I think before, before we start moving, I think we'll, I mean, I don't think that we're going to go, oh, no, that's a million and a half, here we go, I think we're gonna talk about it, but when we, when we figure out what it's going to be, we're gonna talk about it, that's, I, I can't sit here and, I, I believe, may or may not, but we can talk about it.
All right, so, we've got a whole half million in effect, to, play, we think this is what's gonna cost you, I suppose, but it costs more, is this there or not?
Either way, either way, I, 9912, I deliver a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, I have to bring back two, okay, so we do have a vote on what the cost of that building is, I don't hope it wouldn't be any more than that, now we've got her correlation, I have been over alleging on this one, but you're right, it might come in at five fifty, but those discussions will have, and we'll see it, and everybody thinks we, so we don't need it there, so, so those discussions are just waiting on Val Corbati to bring it back, to bring it to you.
All right, so, we signed a contract, was it initially, are they responsible, to give that over, really, or just something, totally separate, or is that, I may, I may have missed something?
Um, once we find this go, we bring it back, and we're approved for a change order with the cost, and so, um...
But I guess I've asked the word procedure, I don't know, just allow it to be, and not put out of the air, what that process, going process is?
Um, I can't remember exactly how that, because we, we thought that it was part of the process, but that's, that, that, I was thinking, I...
Well, I'm saying that building is part of the process at all.
I guess, we, we talked about those, we discussed those, and we said we had our money about for that, that was part of that process, we did not say that, and I...
Everybody knew, we had moved, everybody knew, we had moved, and the outside was building, we're moving.
Right, and we talked about...
That's right, but we didn't say about four B, we don't sit down and move, we didn't say that, and build that, we said they don't build this building for a certain procedure.
Well, I'm just talking about the cost.
Well, I'm just talking about the whole deal, what we talked about.
It, it will require a change order to the contract, if you, to find a go, because that's right now, we're running, so we go with it, and, so that will, as well, as you mentioned, the, the, correct, and with, the guarantee, that's why, if they finish the bond, you will come back, and, so, you say you all will, will have a final decision on all that.
So, is all this coming out of slots, or is this generally, I think, and stuff?
Well, for some of them, I have figured, we couldn't have tested any dollars, so we, but they would rather it come out of slots, than that, we can take it out of slots.
So, I guess, maybe y'all are comfortable, I'm just a bit uncomfortable, but, like, so, do we have, uh, do we have a swap on, and then, can we deduct from that swap around the proposed cost of doing the buildings, and then deduct further the cost of the move, and then deduct further the cost of the footfall, and then deduct further the cost of what we might wanna do with U S D A or not, so, I just, I, I see these projects, like, scheduled down the road, and have the potential of a U S D A situation and so on, but I, I don't have any visual... do we have a slot on it, and then, can we deduct from that slots around, they proposed costs on doing the buildings, and then deduct further the cost of the move, and then deduct further the cost of the fifth floor, and then deduct further the cost of what we might want to do with USDA or on something, I just, I, I see these projects, like, scheduled to be down the road, and have the potential of USDA situations on, but I, I don't have any visual of the, the money side, and that quarter or half, uh, that is, that is being transpired. Are you, are you asking, are you saying that that had to all come out of the block?
We're not just being this. I've had, I talked to, I talked to, uh,